We're ready.
Okay. We came out of our special meeting, we did not complete that, so after our regular meeting, we will go back into our special meeting to complete that meeting. So as of now, we'll open our regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors for March 11th. Can you give us the roll call, Lorna?
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Flynn?
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here. And then we have our moment of affirmation, Pastor Manuel. There he is.
Good morning. Reading out of the Book of Psalms. Rejoice in the Lord, O ye righteous; for praise from the upright is beautiful. Praise the Lord with the harp, make melody to him with an instrument of ten strings; sing to him a new song; play skillfully with the shout of joy. For the word of the Lord is right, and all his work is done in truth. He loves righteousness and justice; earth is full of the goodness of the Lord. By the word of the Lord the heavens were made, and all the host of them by the breath of his mouth. He gathered the waters of the sea together as a heap, and he lays up the deep in storehouses. Let all the earth fear the Lord; let all the inhabitants of the world stand in awe of him. For he spoke, and it was done; he commanded, and it stood fast. The Lord brings the councils of the nations to nothing; he makes the plans of the people of no effect. The counsel of the Lord stands forever, the plans of his heart to all generations. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people he has chosen as his own inheritance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know Supervisor Long wants to make a comment.
Yes, I'd also like us, if we could, to take just a moment of silence this week. In fact, the fourteenth of March commemorates the eightieth anniversary of the collapse of the St. Francis Dam. And as you know, it was one of the second most significant disasters in our state and certainly in our county. We'd just take a moment. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have our young Girl Scout here, or Brownie here today. So we'll do our pledge allegiance. Noel, would you do that for us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would move the minutes of Tuesday, December 18th.
Great.
Second.
Is this thing working?
Where's my little thing here? Nope.
Opening, what are we on?
Okay.
Mine's not coming up at all. Hi.
Yes.
I don't have anything coming up of mine.
Mine worked.
Oh, it did? Okay. We've got that? You want to vote for me? No, come on, we're not in that part of the country. Are you up? Okay, great. Then we'll go to agenda review. Our CEO.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there are a few items here. Item number 10, we've received a letter from Teresa Jordan, which has been distributed to the members of the board. Item 16, we have received four letters from citizens regarding the water rate increase. And item 17 is a correction to the budget, the mid-year budget adjustment letter, revised pages four and five, where the organization numbers should have read fifty-five eighty, not fifty-five ninety. That's it.
All right. Okay. I don't think we can vote again here, right? See, or do a roll call? Yeah, we're gonna try to vote? It's all verbal now? Okay. Any, everybody? Yes? Nobody opposed that? Okay.
Motion passes.
Great, okay. Then we can go to our consent agenda. Items 10 through 11, 10 and 11. We have a motion? And a second? Nobody, everybody in favor? Yes? Yes, okay. Oh, we forgot how to do this on a machine now. I'm sorry, it's 10 through 12. Seeing no objection, then, here we go. All right. So we'll move on to public comments. Do we have any? Do you have any public comments?
You should be showing that you have a few public comment cards already.
I don't, it doesn't show anything.
Okay.
You can call them out if you want. What is this? This is all right now? All right. Caroldean Williams.
Thank you, Caroldean Williams. Sometimes it's the way words are framed. We don't call it Air Force First, we call it Air Force One. So, Mr. Johnson, this is dedicated to you. Instead of April first, it's April one, two thousand and one to two thousand and eight. This is truly your might, Mr. CEO. You give out of your personality the hall of administration honored with your photo. Can the statue of a man be summed in seven verses? Huh! It's no longer Johnny, board agenda verses. Yes, Johnny Johnson, here's the measure of your stature. The doors are too small to bring inside your statue. Can the caliber of a man be summed in poetry? Hmm! It's Johnny who got results. That ain't as easy as plucking poultry. Yes, Johnny Johnson, here's the weight of your caliber. It's your personality, its essence captured. Can the dignity of a man be summed in such few words? Hmm! Johnny Johnson, retirement is hard work. This is truly your might, Mr. CEO. You give out of your personality the hall of administration honored with your photo. So, many happy trails on the hard work of retirement. Mr. Chair, I would like to ask you to recommend that your county council meet with me. I had a meeting with the city attorney of Ventura. It's recorded. He has flatly said he is not going to allow federal rulings on First Amendment rights. And I want to know if your county council is going to take the same position. He's using the White versus City of Norwalk. I'm sure your county council knows the details of that. And I'm quoting the handout he gave me. A speaker may not be stopped from speaking because the moderator disagrees with the viewpoint he is expressing. I have been singled out and been stopped because of my viewpoint. That is against federal law. Mr. Chair, are you a lawbreaker? Do you advocate breaking the law? These are rulings of the federal courts. Under the state law, the government code, the public speaker has the right to address any item that is of interest to the public, not to the government body, to the public. Rulings in nineteen ninety-seven has went so far that the government was trying to stop complaints against employees. There was an injunction preventing that as violation of the First Amendment. They even went as far as saying you had to get the employees' consent before you complained against them. That got an injunction as a violation of the federal. Local government bodies have some leeway to determine the ground rules for public comment, periods, so long as those rules are reasonable and viewpoint neutral. Mr. Chair, please, I'm addressing you while you're talking to the clerk. I think that's a disruption of the meeting under White versus Norwalk. That's not allowed. That is interfering with this meeting, according to the ruling. So I would appreciate you not disrupting this meeting. Mere desire not to listen to the public on a particular topic is not a reasonable basis for a rule. Second, the court found that the rule was an attempt to silence opinions-
We can't, we can't listen to anymore, the time ran out. I gave you, I gave you an extra five seconds because you-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Was an attempt to silence opinions that it was tired of listening to.
All right, good, thanks. Appreciate that. Mr. Matheny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. A couple of pieces of good news I wanted to share with you today. Back in January, your board approved our going forward with efforts to sell for taxes. Approximately forty parcels of land in the county of Ventura, parcels that fell into each of the five supervisors' districts. I'm pleased to tell you that, at this point right now, how many properties are there in Supervisor's Longs District remaining to be sold? Zero. Supervisor Parks, zero. Supervisor Flynn, zero. Supervisor Bennett, zero. Supervisor Foy, it appears that it's a very, very small number. It will probably only be two properties that go to sale. There are some acquisitions by nonprofit or government agencies that are in place to take care of, there's actually eight properties right now that are not redeemed. But most of those will be recycled through a provision of the government code that allows government entities or nonprofits to acquire the property for certain specific uses, most notably to put them into open space, which is what three of the parcels are destined for, if they're not redeemed by the close of business today, or recycled into low-cost housing, which is two of the properties, if they are not redeemed today. But we fully expect at least two parcels to go to sale tomorrow. The second piece of good news I wanted to share with you is that on Friday, we went live with a new revision to our website that allows us to transact business with the public, financial business with the public, twenty-three hours a day, seven days a week, which is a significant enhancement over what we had been limited to before because of the mainframe and the operation and the way the process was originally structured. We had to maintain office hours between six AM and seven PM, and then shut everything down to be able to update the mainframe in the way that we were doing business back then. But we have revised the way that works so that now, if the updating process is much shortened and we can do it in the early morning hours, so that we can transact business essentially twenty-three plus hours a day and have no, no days off. It happens at a good time because of the upcoming April 10 deadline for the second installment of taxes. And it also happens at a good time because of the April 15 IRS deadline. We have made it easier for people to go online and check to see what did they pay in property taxes for the year two thousand and seven, for instance. Now, there's a little icon that can be clicked to look at tax payment history, and we have the ability to have those clustered into calendar years so that you can immediately see what was paid in two thousand and seven. So our partners in all of this, ISD, excuse me, IT Services, have done splendid work. I got a phone call Friday evening at nine PM from Mary Lynn, our webmaster, assuring me that everything had looked good and asking that I monitor our email over the weekend to see if there were any complaints or problems that were coming in and to let her know immediately by cellphone if we did have problems. Thankfully, we had none. So I'm very pleased to report to you on those two items. We are liquidating the taxes on those properties. People are holding on to them for the most part because they've redeemed them, and for the others, for the most part, they're being recycled into some other uses that I think we probably would all agree are good public uses.
Well, thank you. That's great to hear that you've done a great job making sure those people are notified and that they don't lose that property. You have a comment?
Yeah, do you think, what's the hour that you're closed?
I believe that it's five AM to six AM.
Okay, great. One, and two, congratulations. I guess both of those are great enhancements for the public. I mean, it's always that frustration when you're doing your taxes and you go, now, did I pay twice of this? Or, you know, which one? Because they're both not the same always and all that, so that's, that's a nice addition and for the public to be able to do that. I'm curious whether you think this would result in any reduction in staff expenses for you or being able to shift staff to something else that you're not going to have to maintain the same hour?
Well, just that, answering that question about payments made, I think is going to significantly decrease the phone volumes for those people who find it. Now, it's going to take a while for this to be disseminated to the public, but this time of the year, that's a big source of our telephone volume. Folks just haven't been able to retain their records in a way where they can retrieve them, and then oftentimes, the dog ate my homework kind of a thing happens. So we're certainly happy to provide that information to the public, but it puts a strain on things that will be eased now with this new feature.
And I assume when people call, you'll, you'll let them know that it is available on the website so that they don't have to call in the future?
That's right.
But how about the, about the reduced hours, not having to be open as long because you now have the ability for people to access payment and all of that, twenty-three hours a day? Will that reduce employee cost?
Well, what we, it will reduce it in some subtle ways, but the more crucial thing from my perspective is that when, when I ask myself the question, who is most likely to go to our website to transact a payment transaction? It's not likely to be somebody who is unfamiliar with the web. It's more likely to be somebody who's maybe ordered some books from amazon.com. And intuitively, those people, that body of people, would expect us to be operational around the clock. They wouldn't appreciate what the technical reasons were why we had to have office hours before. So there was a level of irritation, I think, that people would have. You come home at the end of the workday, maybe you've commuted back from LA, and, and you get home and it's seven o'clock and you want to have a bite to eat, and then you want to relax, and then you, oh yeah, let's take care of those property taxes, and you go online at eight-thirty and you find that our site is closed. There's just a much, much higher level of public service that we're going to be providing.
So it won't reduce the number of hours or employees that you have manning the front desk here?
I expect that to be a subtle difference because with the reduction in that irritation factor, I think it will mean more people will pay online. We've had regular increases installment point by installment point over the last four years. So I expect that to continue, and, and what we've done with this enhancement is we've gotten rid of another one of those little bumps in the road that would keep somebody from doing it. So my expectation is that we'll at least be able to keep up with the increase in volume as there are more parcels each year.
Good, congratulations.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes, I had a question regarding the cost to pay your taxes online. There's a fee that's charged.
Yes, why is that?
I know that it must be to cover some costs, and I'm just, I would support, when we come back at budget time, to look at reducing that so that we encourage people to use it, even if it may mean that it will cost the county a little bit, because I think in the end, more people will get online and use that, and it will save the county. So I know there's been some concern from the public regarding the cost to do that.
Sure, if I could just address that. The way I respond to the, frankly, numerous emails about, you know, why do we charge a fee? Well, to begin with, we don't charge a fee. There, there is no part of the fee that comes into my office and is within my control. The payment processing company that we use is the one that has the arrangement with the credit card companies, and that two and a half percent for the use of a credit card all goes back through that system. Now, the issue, I think, for your board to consider, whether you would provide budget resources for me to be able to absorb that cost, would be when you're receiving less than twenty percent out of the dollar that's being paid, is it cost-effective to pay a hundred percent of the fee for running that transaction? Two and a half percent of the overall, of the hundred percent ends up being a whopping percentage of the part that is actually the general fund money. So I, you know, I, certainly from my standpoint, it makes it easier if we absorb it, but that's the issue that your board would have to wrestle with and the CEO's office wrestle with as to whether it works out to be cost-effective.
Thank you. And I'd be curious to see how other municipalities are able to do it at either no fee or less fee, so something I'm interested in.
Because how much, how much is paid online, the total amount of tax now?
I would have to get back to you to be sure, but right now, I believe the percentage is around three percent of the total volume of, of payment transactions, not necessarily dollar volume, but payment transactions, somewhere between three and four percent. And my, my hope is that within the next two years, we would be able to get that up around eight, nine percent, which is then a significant part of our, of our operation.
Which means that we could be paying hundreds of thousands of dollars in fees if we were to pick up some of those fees?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I understand where she comes from, just what is the, what's the cost to do that? So, okay, great. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just a comment, I'd like to know how you're going to manage to give candy to those online people?
Oh yeah, we're working on it. Great. Okay, we got some, Charlene Nunez? Sure, come on.
Hi, my name is Charlene Nunez, and I'm a junior at Fillmore High School. We want to thank you for your ongoing support and the money for extending our mentor program to our county areas, because they helped a lot in our community, so thank you for that.
Which high school? Oh, wonderful.
My name is Elia Sarantongo, and I'm a freshman in Fillmore High School, and I'm the vice president of One Step Alaves, and I would, I would like to thank you for, for the facility on the highway, and that it's helping us a lot.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Gonzalez, I'm a junior at Fillmore High School, and I'd like to give special thanks to Melanie Roy for meeting with us regularly to help us open the center and provide transformational mental health services to the youth in Fillmore.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Amanda Carbajal. I'm secretary of One Step Alaves, I'm a junior at Fillmore High School. I just wanted to, to thank Behavioral Health, Public Health, and Palmer Drug Abuse for providing their services and dedicating their time to help us. And I'm pleased to announce that we're planning to open our center on May first. It's at Trinity, Escolpa Church in Fillmore, and it's not very big, but it's our starting point, and we will continue to take the one step at a time till we reach our final goals. This is going to become a wellness center where teens our age can have counseling, group, and individual, and we'll have interactive wellness activities, and we'll have a welcoming place for our youth. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Liz Muñoz, and I'm a senior at Fillmore High School, and I'm the president of the One Step Alaves. This is some of my thoughts about the Mental Health Service Act. It was my understanding that the Mental Health Service Act, its purpose is to provide transformational services to low-income minority underserved populations such as Fillmore and its residing communities, Sancho Cesci, Parihuambarso. Yes, as it is, the funds that are made available are being used to replace lost services. It's not to say that those services aren't important and crucial in Ventura County, but these funds are intended to provide transformational services for the- these funds are intended to provide transformational services for the intended populations and communities. What I would like to see is a more diverse, more diverse committees that represent their community, their communities and that meet in the evenings rather than the mornings because many people can't attend the morning meetings. That would provide childcare, transportation for those that can't attend and translation made available for them. Because Ventura County is very diverse and we have to make that available to everyone who would like to participate in their, in their county and make a difference. The One Step is the Mental Health Service Act. We are doing exactly what that money should be providing. We are serving a low-income minority community. And yet, I don't see that happening. I don't see, I don't see the money being made available to those communities that really are asking for it, that really need it. And I don't see other, other board committees in the county. I mean, they do listen to us, they do take us into consideration, but what I'd like to see is putting up, putting us on the list, such as the other groups that receive funds from the county. Other than that, I want to thank you for your continued supports because we are getting this done. You know, we will continue advocating for our communities. You know, we hope to spark another child in a different, in another minority community and maybe they'll do the same thing for their community and come here and try to make a difference. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I might thank you for being here. You did an excellent job in your presentation and covering the points. And thank you, Lynn, for, as always, working with these youth and the advocacy. And I appreciate that you did thank Melanie. And Melanie and I have talked and it's recognized that there needs to be more work done with the Mental Health Services Act to, one, to invite more, to more folks to the table, youth particularly, to hold meetings in the evening, to have the diversity representation of the population that the Mental Health Services Act is certainly geared to support. You do an excellent job in Fillmore. I look forward to your May 1st opening. And I know that Melanie will continue to, to work with the Mental Health Board to see how we can make this a better, more inclusive process. So I thank you for your advocacy. Thank you for coming down here this morning.
Yes, thank you. And you'll all be invited once we open our center.
Great.
To see what we're doing in our communities.
Look forward to it.
You know, it's, it's people like yourselves who get out and do something, especially at your age. You don't see a lot of adults doing what you're doing, so it's just great to see. And I, you guys have a great future.
Yeah.
Thanks so much for what you did.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's all of our public comments. We'll go to board comments. Supervisor Flynn, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you. I'd ask the board to adjourn the memory of people on this list. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn the people on this list. I'll call one out and that's Raymond Irwin, who was part of the Ventura Unified School District for the past 20 years, passed away. I'd also just like to thank the staff of the Watership Protection District for helping to coordinate a meeting with commissioners and the staff from the Ocean Protection Council. They came here to Ventura County February 28th and 29th. It's pretty remarkable that they came here, as busy as the Ocean Protection Council is, as much, they, as much money as they have in terms of revenue that they have to allocate. Well, I think they're very interested in Ventura County and in partnering with Ventura County. And the staff did, I think, a great job of showing them our green infrastructure and our low-impact development projects, which will really help us with our stormwater permit runoff. So it's a good day for Ventura County, the 27th, or, I'm sorry, the 28th and 29th, when you have that many people from the state who allocate that much money coming here specifically to look at our projects in Ventura County. Thank you.
Supervisor Park?
Thank you. I would just ask that the board close in honor of the people on this list. And one who I would like to call out is Nancy Gatch, who is the wife of Phil Gatch, our longtime planning director at the City of Thousand Oaks and, and our, our city manager for a bit. Nancy was a very good girl, she's a very alive person, that's why it's hard to think that she's no longer with us. She was a teacher. I know my children at Westlake High School had her as a substitute teacher, but for 40 years, she was a teacher and taught as long as she possibly could and really gave a lot to the, to her students and as well as a member of the community in, working with the National Charity League and the Assistance League. She's really going to be missed by a lot and so I'd ask that we close, especially in her honor too. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you. I have a list to submit also to ask the board to adjourn in memory of. And I'd like to just let the board know and invite you to participate if you wish. The Camarillo Boys and Girls Club is having a One Club Breakfast Gathering, which is on Thursday, March 20th, and it's 7:30 to 9:00 and it's at the, in Camarillo at the service center that is operated by the Superintendent of County Schools. But why I'm bringing this up is because the speaker is Colonel Dave Grossman and he is one of the nation's leading authorities on school safety and the causes and prevention of school violence. This was booked months and months ago, but it is obviously timely and this is, he is a recognized expert in the area of school violence and I think it will be one, a, a wonderful breakfast, a breakfast where I think the community can ask questions and hear what, what work is being done nationally dealing with school violence. There will also be by invitation, a reservation only, a special time following the breakfast from 10 to noon that Mr. Grossman is going to make himself available to meet with the education community and the professionals to have a one-on-one conversation with them about school violence and safety in schools. So I wanted to let you know of the breakfast. If you're interested, I have invitations. I certainly would welcome you to sit at my table as long as there's no more than three of us. As I look at my county council. But again, the Superintendent of County Schools is one of the sponsors and they, and Dr. Wees has reached out to all the superintendents and school professionals to participate in this event, so. March 20th, next Thursday, week from, week from Thursday. And that's it, sir.
Thank you. Very good, that's great. I too would like to adjourn in memory of people on this list. I'd also like to make comment in regards to, I think last time or the time before, I talked about Morita Park High Academic and you hear about that? Yeah, they won the state championship and it was interesting that it was, they surpassed almost 400 points, higher than anybody else had ever done. So they're on their way to the Nationals, which is great, which is going to end in April. So they're representing Ventura County very well. It's great to see that, so. Yeah, very exciting. I guess Ventura County can turn. That's great, isn't it? I guess Ventura County turns out some pretty smart kids. That's great to see. So I'm sure it's great coaching too. Anyway, so those are my comments and we will move on then to our regular agenda before our 9:30 time's certain. If we can go to 18. We want to, who's that? We have an appointment. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. I'd like to appoint Bill Miley to the alcohol drug investigation board.
Second, are we working, is our voting working? Should be able to vote? There we go. Okay. There we go, yeah, wow, look at that. That's great. Okay, we'll move on to number 19.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mr. Johnson and Bruce McDowell from the Sheriff's Department. Bless you. We are requesting that your board ratify a sheriff's submittal of a grant application to the California Office of Traffic Safety, which is requesting funds for the forensic service laboratory. Majority of these funds will be used to replace the aging inventory of mobile alcohol breath testing devices.
We have a motion in a second. We will vote. Thank you. There you go, thank you very much. We'll move on to our correspondence agenda. Is that a little too fast for you?
All right, hold on. For clarification on the agenda, actually consent agenda items should be 10 through 12, not 10 through 11.
Okay.
And the motion again?
Okay, we need a motion for the consent agenda, 10 through 12. Okay. So now we're going to go to correspondence? Okay, got a motion in a second. So I think we are done with our regular agenda. We are voted, we are done. So we'll take a break for 10 minutes? There's nothing else?
Yep.
Okay, we'll have a break for 10 minutes.
And the funding is in phase one. If you build attached to the existing Todd Road facility, then you have the state basically getting ownership interest in everything that we have on that complex, even though they're only building in addition for 30 years, the length of the construction bond funding, which causes problems for the county of Ventura, less liberty in how they use that land and the collateral that goes with it for future borrowing, for financial purposes, that's an issue. Another issue is you would subject the entire facility to earthquake retrofit. Nobody can tell us what the cost of that's going to be. It would be significant to the county just for an addition. You have to bring the whole complex into compliance. If the facility is not attached, which is an option, you could put it five to 15 feet away from what you have. It would be an island in the middle of a secure facility. It would be difficult for operational reasons. It would be difficult for security reasons. You could have a different staffing component in that facility. The state could staff it with state correctional officers and in an island of county employees. Command and control would be difficult. We think that that's unworkable for us if we went to that detached option. And probably the most serious concern for us is that they're only funding construction up to 2011 population needs. It'll take longer than 2011 to build it. We'll be lucky to see it built in 2012, 2013. So you'd be building an already understaffed facility, and the requirement would be that you staff it within 90 days of completion, even if you don't have the population for it. So if you, so it forces you again to underbuild. And if we had to do that, we'd have to start hiring today. And we would have to build a facility small enough that we could assure that we could meet that criteria. Otherwise, it could revert to the state of California. We'd much prefer an option where we're building a jail that would allow for future growth, where we don't occupy it the day that it opens up. We're not in an overcrowded situation, you know, as soon as we turn the key, but that we have vacant space that we can grow into over years and just staff as population dictates. So with all of those things pending, we still have time to apply for phase one. It's the board's discretion whether we do. Our recommendation is that we don't, that we wait for phase two. We, we're also very concerned that this process with AB 900 and the indecisive nature of the state's response to it is that we don't lose time because our need is now. We're already overcrowded by 250 people. Violence is going up in the jail, introduction of drugs, liability issues, the potential of court interaction is there as long as we stayed in an overcrowded condition. And the longer we wait, the greater that problem becomes. Right now, we're in an environment where construction is slow. Bids should be very competitive. Material costs aren't quite as, you know, are increasing at the rate that they would have been. Interest rates are low. We'd rather build now and build for the future and not lose time waiting until all the state things, you know, play themselves out. We'd like to see state money. We hope that we will, but we don't want to slow the process down, which is why we'd like to have a study session, make a board decision on the phase of construction that we're shooting at so that we can begin all the design and the preliminary work and keep the ball rolling and not lose momentum at this critical time for our department and for the county. That would be happy and answer any questions. I have a cadre of experts back here that can answer anything that's too technical for me.
That's a scary group you got back there.[1122.14][1122.14][laughing] Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. Number one, I appreciate the presentation today and also appreciate the collaboration between the CEO's office and sheriff's office to do this kind of analysis as we move forward. So certainly, I'm very supportive of the idea of having a study session, having you work with the CEO's office to coordinate the time and the agenda and all of that. Two points I'd like to make is, one, it's just very typical, the oftentimes lack of common sense that comes with some of the strings that come from the state and sometimes the federal government. The idea that you must fully staff it, even if you don't have an inmate population for it, is just an example of somebody, somebody with some political powers rammed that rule through, and it just doesn't make any common sense. And along that line of common sense, I'm just going to be asking and hope that we make as part of the motion that when we agendize this discussion and we're trying to figure out what is that size that we're trying to build for, et cetera, that we also have a healthy discussion about all the creative options that are out there for us to look at in terms of detention. Because this, this idea of building is causing angst in virtually every county. I know Supervisor Brooks Firestone just publicly announced, "We don't have the money. We can't build it." We're not in that situation here. But when a fairly conservative person like Brooks Firestone is making those kind of announcements, it is a challenge to get there, and I just hope that we'd all keep our creative hats on. I know with the Juvenile Justice Center, we, you know, we had, you know, a lot of, lot of issues there, and we want to have that same good creative thinking as we go forward. So that's going to be my request as we go forward. That, just want to get that out there.
I certainly agree. Thank you. Supervisor Long?
Yeah, just thank you, and thank you to the team. Excellent analysis and right on target as far as the strings that are so strongly tied to this and whether or not it's the best move for us to enter into an RFP at this phase. I, I think that everything you said is very correct. I, I serve on the executive steering committee for the RFPs, and will be going up to Sacramento on the 31st and then on April 23rd and 24th to spend time with the RFPs that are applied for, which I think you're correct, they're falling off quickly. Now, whether LA and their big muscle can change some of the dynamics of that, we'll see, but I, I don't know, even if they do, that we would be in a position with all the others ahead of us with consent decrees, et cetera, that will be applying for this. The issues of encumbering the property was a serious one and certainly recognized by, by your leadership. I think the other issue of, of the reentry facility is one that is going to require some regional dialogue, frankly. If, if this continues to be a piece of any funding that comes forward from the state, I met with Mayor Holden and had some discussion with him about reentry facility and the pros and cons of the strings attached that the state was even putting onto that, onto that criteria. The, I think the, the issue with timing is, is one that certainly, again, you, you hit the nail on the head, Sheriff, with the 2011 date. So I, I think there, there may be opportunity in the next phase. We'll see what comes out of this first round and how hard people push. As, as you know, we had, we, the executive steering committees had our meetings and set some criteria, and then a week later, we were overturned. And they pushed different criteria than even this body that they asked us to, you know, work with and, and give our expertise on, and, and the reentry facility being one, that, that those numbers changed. And so, right on target and certainly agree with moving ahead with a study session to see what we do locally to do what's best for what the needs are and also to, you know, get, get perhaps better positioned in the, in additional phases of funding.
I just want to mention, we're very appreciative of the support that we've received from Supervisor Long on that committee. She's been a very effective advocate for us and also a source of accurate information back to us.
Thank you.
Well, good. I do also agree with you that we can't count on the state to give us any money. There's, there's just no, no question. Let's don't play their games. All right, so we have the opportunity to put a, for a study session here?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make the motion that we move forward with the recommended action and include in that, as the part of the agenda setting between the CEO's office and the sheriff, an opportunity for us to explore as many options as possible for, for detention so that, you know, help us explore what's the proper number in terms of us housing. So that'd be my, be my motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and I think the sheriff is shaking his head, agrees with that? Can we do that? And CEO, too? Great. Okay. Then we'll vote. What's that? That's a new look. Oh, you are good. It all passed. Well, thank you. We look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yeah, no.
If I could mention something, since Kathy's here, I had an opportunity to tour the kitchen of the main jail. And, and it just said to me that one of those small things as we look at how we fund and operate a jail system, hearing from the, the cooks and the chef who run the jail and the escalating cost, inflationary cost of food is one of those little blips, but boy, it sure adds up. And it was quite, I, one, I enjoyed doing that and learning from and hearing from them, but it sure does give you indicators of how those things start to add up. Going from a charge of, of giving milk three times a day to inmates, and that cost alone increased over $100,000 to the system. So I thank you for being able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will, since we've got 15 minutes, we're going to go back into our closed session for the next 15 minutes, and we'll come back out.
Supervisor Foie, you're
I'm sorry.
You're recessing the regular meeting
Recessing the regular meeting.
And going back into closed session on the special meeting?
Okay. So now we go to our regular meeting, and we are on our 10 o'clock time certain, and Supervisor Bennett has a resolution.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a real pleasure. And Ulrich Rick O'Mayer, would you please come up to the podium so that everybody can see you as we do this? And then we'll have the pleasure of having Assessor Dan Goodwin also will be here, and I'm sure will add to some comments after we do this. But this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors upon the retirement of Ulrich Rick O'Mayer after 31 years of dedicated service to the county of Ventura. And I'm not going to say Ulrich Rick Mayer each time in the resolution. I'm just going to say Rick. You go by Rick, right? But whereas Rick earned a bachelor's degree in business administration from California State University, Northridge, in 1974. And Rick joined the Ventura County Public Service Agency in July 1977 as an eligibility worker, later joining the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District as an Environmental Resource Agency technician. Rick joined the assessor's office on November 13th, 1978. So that's when it started with the assessor's office. You talk about experience and background, there's a whole lot of experience walking out the door here as Rick walks out the door from 78. As an appraiser trainee, he advanced through the assessor's office promoting five times through the ranks, obtaining the position of supervising appraiser. And Rick received his certified appraiser certification from California State Board of Equalization on October 6th, 1979, his advanced appraiser certificate in 82. Rick honorably and reliably served four Ventura County assessors and appraised thousands of properties, including tracks, subdivisions, custom, rural, commercial, industrial, and special properties, accruing a wealth of knowledge and skills to assist Ventura County property owners. And for the last four years, Ulrich supervised the custom division, supervising 10 employees and overseeing the assessment of many complex properties, including those damaged by natural disasters such as fires, floods, earthquakes, and freezes. Rick has been an accomplished mentor and trainer honoring, I mean honing many top-notch appraisers who are still in the office today, giving skill, depth of knowledge, and longevity to the practices of the assessor's office, thus encouraging a whole new generation of appraisers. Rick has consistently been valued for his positive attitude, respect shown to the citizens of Ventura County, and dedication to a thorough and accurate work product, honesty in his words and deeds, and respect for confidentiality.
State University, Northridge, in 1974. And Rick joined Ventura County Public Service Agency in July 1977 as an eligibility worker, later joining the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District as an Environmental Resource Agency technician. Rick joined the assessor's office on November 13th, 1978. So that's when it started with the assessor's office. You talk about experience and background. There's a whole lot of experience walking out the door here as Rick walks out the door from '78. As an appraiser trainee, he advanced through the assessor's office promoting five times through the ranks, obtaining the position of supervising appraiser. And Rick received his certified appraiser certification with California State Board of Equalization on October 6, 1979, his advanced appraiser certificate in '82. Rick honorably and reliably served four Ventura County assessors and appraised thousands of properties, including tract, subdivisions, custom, rural, commercial, industrial, and special properties, accruing a wealth of knowledge and skills to assist Ventura County property owners. And for the last four years, Ulrich supervised the custom division, supervising 10 employees and overseeing the assessment of many complex properties, including those damaged by natural disasters such as fires, floods, earthquakes, and freezes. Rick has been an accomplished mentor and trainer honoring, I mean honing many top-notch appraisers who are still in the office today, giving skill, depth of knowledge, and longevity to the practices of the assessor's office, thus encouraging a whole new generation of appraisers. Rick has consistently been valued for his positive attitude, respect shown to the citizens of Ventura County, and dedication to a thorough and accurate work product, honesty in his words and deeds, and respect for confidentiality of public records and personal information. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring Ulrich Rick Mayer for his 31 years of dedicated, loyal, and professional service to the citizens of Ventura County.[616.02][616.02](applause)
Before we ask you to say anything, I'm going to ask our assessor, Dan Goodwin, to come up and add his comments. And then we want to turn it over to you for some sage words of advice after 31 years of service.
Certainly. Honorable members of the board, you know, one of the things that I think is the most difficult about losing Rick is the same reason. I appreciate him so much. And that is the mentoring part of what he's done. You know, you build up knowledge and there are certain things you can do on paper. But one of the very hard things to replace is this capacity that he's had to encourage individuals to bring trainees into a level of decision-making that makes them productive. Rick was always a very productive appraiser in all the areas that he worked. And one of the things that can really slow down decision-making is a lack of confidence and insecurity. And we basically pay people to make decisions and move on to the next one, make another decision, move on to the next one. And Rick has just been a tremendous asset to the assessor in teaching people about that, giving them the confidence, giving them a sense of knowing how to pull the trigger and move on to the next one. Rick, we're going to miss you tremendously. Thank you.
Can we ask for some sage words of advice? You know, basically, it's hard to believe 31 years went by so quickly. I remember my first day at the job. And to be honest with you, I never thought I'd be here 31 years. I never had a job for more than a year. And I started, you know, you get out of college, you don't realize, you know, what your career is going to be. And once I started working for Ventura County and, you know, I enjoyed it. I enjoyed the career, the appraiser, the staff, the people. And I enjoyed working for Ventura County. And I highly recommend others to follow a career path like I did. And tier one is wonderful.[737.02][737.02](laughing) I had to say it. And tier two is wonderful, too.
Yes, you bet.
That's great.
Hey, Rick, can I ask you a question? Now, tell me, you know, 20 something years ago, you were assessing a piece of property. You got to assess some of it again, right?
Right.
So you probably saw some, what, $40,000 homes that turned into 400, that turned to 800, right?
Actually, if you want the biggest examples of incredible, Lake Sherwood, where you could have bought a house back in the early 80s when the lake was struggling for 20,000. Now the land's worth probably 3 million.
Wow.
So, had we only known.[805.02][805.02](laughing)
Better than tier one.
(laughing)
He's also been our La Conchita expert. I know Kathy and I worked with Rick back in 99, so we had to start doing some restoration. But he, he's also, you know, that's, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of issues that Rick's been a special part of. And La Conchita was not an easy project. It was only part of it was figuring out how to value it. Another part was explaining that to the owners.
Yeah, the public, the taxpayers, you know, being sympathetic to them and their problems. So it was a big thing.
Thanks for your long service. Thank you very much. Thank you.[843.72][843.72](applause) Okay, we, number 15, the young lady, the little Girl Scout that was going to be here is sick today. And so we're going to postpone that so we can see her another day. I hate to miss her.
She ate too many Girl Scout cookies?
That's what it was.
I purchased my two boxes yesterday. The calls were coming in.
Oh, that's good. All right, let's move on to number 16 then. Adopting some water rates versus Girl Scouts. Okay. You know, this water rate increase thing you keep bringing is tough. I didn't hear that was it? Oh, yeah.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston. Ready Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. This item is a public hearing for the proposed water rate increase for Ventura County Water Work District Number 19. As you know, this is a special district. And my presentation is about 12 minutes long. District provides water service to the community of Somas and surrounding areas. Here is a map of the district. District has approximately 12,500 acres. The district service area extends, here is the Los Angeles Avenue, Highway 118, from Moore Park to Ventura. And district service area extends from west of Center School Road, right here, all the way to east of Balcom Canyon Road. On the south side, our boundary extends to La Poses Road to Camerio Hills. On the north side, the boundary goes to South Mountain Range in this area. We serve more than 1,000 customers. There are 295 customers who receive ag water supply. The remaining are municipal and industrial, municipal industrial customers for residential and business purposes. We have 112 customers who are exclusively ag customers. For more than 10 years now, district participated in what we call in-loo program, where we have been storing water in the ground for future use as a drought-proofing measure. And we have been importing more than 90% of our supplies from imported water supplies through Cuyegus Municipal Water District. As you know, they buy water from Metropolitan Water District. And the water for the service area comes from State Water Project. And the balance of the water is provided by groundwater wells owned and operated by the district. Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency, GMA, which manages the local groundwater basins, restricts the pumping from groundwater to bring the groundwater basins to safe yield. Currently, district operates under what we call historical allocations from GMA. If district pumps or participates in the groundwater storage program and uses more than our historical allocations, district is subject to a penalty of $725 per acre foot. So the point I'm trying to make is we have restrictions from the local supply and also imported supplies. Within the district service area, there are three mutual water companies and also private water wells who provide water supply for ag purposes. The private water companies are namely Zone Mutual Water Company is in this area here. Bullwood Heights provides water supply for ag purposes on the east side of the district. And on the south side of the district, south of LA Avenue, our La Poses Mutual Water Company provides ag supply. In total, there's more than 10,000 acre feet of water pumped from the groundwater well for wells for the ag supply, whereas district provides approximately 1,900 acre feet per year for the ag purposes. About 70% of the district water supply is for ag purposes, used by about 295 ag customers. Only 15% of the total demand is from ag customers who irrigate less than five acres. Effective January 1, 2008, Metropolitan Water District imposed a 30% reduction in ag water deliveries to the district. Because the State Water Project water supply to Metropolitan was reduced due to protect delta smelt and endangered fish and also because of the six-year drought in Colorado River Basin. Metropolitan and Cuyegus also stopped providing interim ag water to the district, which will mean the district will be pumping about 70% of its supply from local groundwater beginning this fiscal year. Groundwater supplies by the district exceed secondary contamination levels for iron and manganese. And iron and manganese are not the prime, so they're not health risk. However, they cause water turbid, brown water. So our customers are not accepting the brown water. So we are installing wellhead treatment and investing about $1 million this year to construct a wellhead treatment plant as to offer wells. The district was created in 1981 when the district assumed the ownership of Rancho La Poses Mutual Water Company. Over the years, district has constructed reservoirs, pump stations, and connections to Cuyegus to provide reliable water supply to our customers. Water system consists of eight reservoirs, seven booster pump stations, and 55 miles of water lines. Some of the water lines are more than 50 years old and they need replacement. District prepared a pipeline replacement program and identified pipelines that need to be replaced over a 20-year period at an estimated cost of $12 million. This particular slide shows you all of the pipeline segments that we have identified that needs to be replaced over a period of time. We have looked at the age of the pipeline, looked at the construction of the pipe material and the pipeline that's, the condition that's in, based on that we have come up with priorities of projects which need to be replaced. Currently, district is reserving $300,000 per year for the system improvement. Effective January 1, 2008, as your board is aware, Cuyegus and Metropolitan increased their water rates by 10%. Edison Company increased their rates by 4%. If district does not reduce the imported ag water deliveries by 30%, district will be subject to a penalty of $818 per acre foot by Metropolitan Cuyegus Water District. District has lost $114 per acre foot of ag subsidy from Metropolitan Water District because of the 30% reduction in ag water deliveries. To assist district customers to comply with the 30% reduction in ag water deliveries from Metropolitan Water District, we requested GMA to allow district to use what we call efficiency allocations instead of historical allocations. GMA approved our request. This will mean that ag customers who are efficient can use sufficient water to irrigate their crops. We reviewed the impact of Cuyegus, Metropolitan, Edison, and 30% reduction in imported water supplies and the pipeline replacement program on the district budget. And we are recommending the following rate increases. Yeah, forwards. We are recommending a 9% water rate increase for municipal industrial or residential customers, 21.1% increase for ag customers who are less than five acres. And from five to 10 acres, 9% increase. Greater than 10 acres, 15.8% increase, and a 4% lift charge increase. Elimination of ag discount and making the water rate for ag customers less than five acres equal to the residential rate is similar to other water districts that we have. For example, in District 17, Bell Canyon, we have properties between one and five acres, but we do not have any discount for ag rates. In District 1, we do not have any discount for ag water for less than five acres. As you are aware, these are the two special districts that your board governs. So our recommendation is to make this water rate consistent with the other water districts that we manage. This particular slide shows you the water rate comparisons within Ventura County. We surveyed 16 water, major water purveyors within Ventura County. The average water rate within Ventura County is $793 per acre foot, the highest being $1,245 per acre foot, and the lowest being $562 per acre foot. That's for Ventura County Water Work District Number 19, for which you are considering the proposed water rate increase. By the way, these rates are not the proposed rates for District 19. They're the rates as of today.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
On these comparisons, other than if you take away the private entities which can get profit, why is there so much variation between the government entities' water rates?
It depends if they have 100% imported source of water. For example, if you look at District 17, which has 100% of imported supplies, at the same time, we have to pump three stages for us to get water over the hill. That's one of the higher rates for District 17.
So you take into factor of whether they are imported and whether there's pumping and that that should be the difference for the most part?
That's one of the differences. And it also depends whether the infrastructure is newer infrastructure or it needs replacement. In areas like, for example, District 1, which provides water supply to Moore Park area, most of the infrastructure is constructed by the new growth, when the new growth comes on. Whereas, for example, District 19, we have a limited number of customers, old infrastructure, so we need to replace the lines. At the same time, District 19 is the lower end because we get almost 70% of our supplies from the local sources. Only 30% comes from imported sources.
Okay. I just, you know, I was kind of surprised to see City of Thousand Oaks and Newberry Park, the Calum, and Newberry Park being the, you know, top, second and third highest rates. And I know that maybe the infrastructure might be a little bit older, but compared to what we're charged, we're at the bottom certainly in terms of the county and how much we charge. And just finally, for my assistance, in the, if you could provide me at a later time where Triumpho might fit in on this Triumpho Sanitation District that we serve on?
That's Oak Park Water System?
Right.
Okay, should we do that? Should your board approve the proposed rate increases? I'm sorry, I lost my place here. Elimination of ag discount and making the water rate equal to the residential rate for customers with less than five acres is consider, is consistent with the water rates for other water districts governed by your board. There are 167 ag customers with less than five acres and use about 15% of the total water demand for the district. A majority of these parcels are between two to three acres.
Supervisor Long?
I have a question. Maybe a, well, let me ask it. The proposal for the less than five acres and greater than 10 acres. The proposal for the less than five acres and greater than ten acres, was there discussion at the advisory committee as to why you wouldn't take that total of thirty percent and just split it evenly? I guess I'm questioning, it seems like we're really disadvantaging the less than five acre farmer.
Yeah. At the advisory committee meeting, there was big discussion about should there be elimination of ag discount for five acres or ten acres? That's what the discussion was. And we talked to several farmers, asked them, what is the minimum parcel size that could survive just on agricultural business? Is it a five acres or ten acres? And they said it all depends on type of crop that you grow. It could be ten acres, it could be more than ten acres. As far as splitting the cost of increasing less than five acres at a lower increment, we did talk about it, but the challenge we have is we have a need for increased revenues to replace the pipelines, to improve the system. At the same time, our water rates have been going up from imported water supplies, Edison rates, and we, as a staff, recommended bringing less than five acres equal to the MNI rate, again, consistent with other Waters-- Seventeen, Water District One that we manage. And advisory committee agreed with our recommendation.
Let me-- let me just tag on that a little bit. I know in Camarosa, when I had-- went for a water meter with them, you could have twenty, thirty, fifty, a hundred acres, you had to have something planted within it, like an acre or two acres worth of crops in order to get an ag meter. Is under these one hundred and sixty-seven parcels that are five acres or less, is there something that somebody gets ag? Because is there two meters on that, a residential meter and an ag meter?
Yes.
Okay.
All of the customers in District Nineteen have two meters where they have ag water rate, one for ag, one for domestic.
Right. But is there a qualification for them to get an ag meter? Do they have to have some type of crops growing?
Yes. At this time, they need to irrigate at least one acre minimum.
One acre minimum.
One acre minimum. And they all-- the difference between ag and domestic water supply is if somebody were to build a home, when they come to us, we ask for what's called a capital improvement charge. The capital improvement charge for a three-quarter inch meter is two thousand dollars. For ag customers, we do not collect the capital improvement charges because we consider them interruptible ag customers.
Sure.
So let's say if somebody wants to convert from ag to domestic, they could do that, but they have to pay the capital improvement charges plus ongoing meter charges and the commodity rates.
Right. Out of the one hundred and sixty-seven, how many have more than an acre planted that's irrigated of some kind? Do we have a lot of them? Or do people just have their five acres that are just open or not? Do we know? I mean, you don't-- you just give me estimate, yeah.
Well, I think what we know is we have less than five acres, one hundred and sixty-seven customers.
Right.
We have greater than ten acres, one oh three, one hundred and three customers. And between five and ten, we have twenty-five customers.
But we don't know on the-- a lot of those one sixty-seven, if they just-- if they have any crops, or it's just they've just kept that land as, you know, whatever.
We know they're getting at least one acre.
In order to have that egg.
Yes. Should your board approve the proposed water rate increase, on average, it will mean an increase of two dollars fifty-five cents per month for the residential customers. Again, this is per month. And we figured it's twenty-three dollars per month increase for ag customers who have less than five acres. These are the average numbers based on our water consumption, you know, on our records.
Let me just ask another question. When you say two fifty per person?
For home, for residence.
For home. If I'm paying them two hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars or whatever for my water, and you're giving me a ten percent increase, I mean, are you taking some homes or some meters that just don't have any usage and you just divide it across the board?
Yeah. What we have done is we have taken the normal meter size for a home. We have different meter sizes depending on the water demand for a given property.
Right.
Three-quarter inch meter is a normal meter size for a standard-sized home, and we took water consumption for that particular meter size and came up with what's average water usage and what it would mean in terms of average bill. It's about thirty-eight-- thirty-eight dollars per month just for the water, per month, not bimonthly, per month. And if you like-- look at thirty-eight dollars, this nine percent would mean two dollars fifty-five cents increase on the top of thirty-eight dollars.
Wow. I just don't know anybody pays thirty-eight dollars a month for water, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. And as I stated, this would mean twenty-three dollars per month increase for customers who have less than five acres of ag. And it will mean twenty-six-- forty-six dollars per acre foot for customers between five and ten acres, and seventy-one dollars per acre foot for customers with greater than ten acres. As your board is aware, water rates are subject to the provisions of Prop. 18. A forty-five-day notice of the proposed water rate increase was mailed on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and eight. Clerk of the Board received four written protests, and all of the copies were provided to you this morning. And that package also includes one letter from homeowners association, and they wanted to meet with me and talk to me about the proposed water rate increase. I met with the president and the board member to talk about what our proposal is. I told them if they would like to come out and make a test-- testify at the board meeting, they may choose to so-- choose to do so, and I believe we have one member of the board here to talk about their position. The District Citizens Advisory Committee approved-- appointed by your board concurred with the proposed water rate increase by three to one. One board-- one advisory committee member who descended, he does not want us to continue to improve the pipeline replacement and increase the water rates. His position is we should try to fix the leaks as they occur and not replace the lines, and we disagree with that. Yes, sir.
Is that more expensive?
We are recommending that your board approve the recommendations in the staff report. This concludes my verbal presentation. I'll be glad to take any questions you might have. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions before we hear from our speaker? We have a one speaker here, Dave Hutter.
Good morning. My name is Dave Hutter, and I live at fifty-one thirty-eight Faircrest Lane in Somus. I also represent the Grow Property Owners Association. We're a homeowners association that's responsible for a hundred and twenty of the one hundred and sixty-seven parcels that are under five acres. We all have two meters. Like Ready said, we have a residential and an ag meter. About fifteen years ago, the board got together with District Nineteen, and we certified all parcels to be ag-efficient. Every year, we recertify our parcels, and then the board gives us a bimonthly allocation on how much water we can use. The part of the proposal that we have a problem with is the less than five acre designation. We'd rather that we'd eliminate that and have a just a ten-- less than ten acre designation and enjoy the nine percent increase rather than the twenty-one percent increase. Now, I was understanding that in District One, there were no parcels under two acres or five acres?
Man.
Sure.
As I stated before, in District One, we do not provide ag discount for any properties less than five acre irrigated land.
But even if we went with what the increase in District One, their rate is still twenty cents an acre foot less than what we would realize if the proposal is passed. We didn't find out about-- we were notified forty-five days ahead of time, but we really didn't realize the impact of this, and so we were not able to-- we were late in talking to Ready about what the situation was and what we could do about it, so we weren't able to attend that board review meeting. We also discussed it with an ag manager who manages a lot of properties up in-- on the groves, and he estimates it between-- he said between twenty and twenty-five percent or more of his clients would stop raising avocados. And so if you don't have money coming in, you aren't going to spend money on weed control and stuff, except the ten feet that borders your property that the fire department requires that you do. And in that last wildland fire that we had, we saw that standing up on top of the hill watching it come in, it comes about two rows of avocados into the grove and it stops, but, you know, if there's weeds and not watering the trees, then we have the potential for losing our homes out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah. Ready, would you mind coming back up? You know, as I-- as I listen to this and if we've listened to some other water rate things, I've had this question come to my mind, and the counties are challenged to do municipal services. It's just counties aren't designed to do municipal services, and every place where we have to do municipal services, you butch back there with the roads, et cetera, we're always-- it's always-- it's always a challenge. You do a good job, but we're not-- we're just not set up, you know, for municipal services. So my first question is, how do we get the job? You said we inherited in nineteen eighty-one the Rancho whatever Water District. How is it that the county started picking up these water districts? I mean, we don't-- county doesn't provide water in the unincorporated area of Ojai. We have the Casitas Municipal Water District. Why are-- why-- how did that-- do you know the background on that?
Yeah. It's my understanding the private mutual water company was having problem with water interruptions. The pumps were not running, they were running out of water. At that time, the local residents and the private-- owner of the private mutual water company came to the county asking for help. So county said, I understand-- my understanding is the county staff at that time told them, you have an option of creating a special district. What that means is any of the expenses have to be borne by the customers of the district. That's when District Nineteen was created back in nineteen eighty-one. As you are aware, Supervisor Bennett, we have five special districts. Most of the special districts are outside the city limits, like District One, which has City of Moore Park, District Nineteen, Somas, District Seventeen, Bell Canyon, Lake Sherwood, there's a CST, we provide water supply. We also have Piru Small Water System, we provide water supply. So where there's no city, county has created special district to provide that service to the residents of that area.
Not-- not always, so we have other incorporated areas where water--
Right. If there's an opportunity for somebody else to provide service, we have done that, like in Ojai Valley, I believe, we used to have several water districts in early seventies. Those have been either merged with the City of Ojai or Casitas Municipal Water District.
And these-- these special districts that were created, were they created by the-- by the county, by the board of supervisors, or created by the citizens through some vote?
Created, county board of supervisors had to approve the creation, and LFO is the one who really formed the special district.
So it wasn't a citizen initiative vote or whatever, it was a board of supervisors. So the board of supervisors created these five special districts, right?
That's-- that's my understanding.
Okay. All right. The other points that I'd just like to make is that-- and thanks, Ready, I don't think you need to-- I don't need to make you stand there any longer, right? But costs are going to keep going up and up and up for these-- these water districts. Energy costs are going to go extremely high and all the pumping that's involved in that. We're going to have increasing water shortages in the state, and everybody's going to say we're going to keep increasing their rates because of the water shortage. We have aging infrastructure, as Ready pointed out, and if you think it's expensive to fix aging infrastructure, try not fixing it and watching and seeing. I mean, I see some of these small water districts in the Ojai Valley, they tried to get by and not fix it. Now they're spending a fortune in emergency dig-ups and everything else. You have to do that. And then just overall, capital costs are going to keep going up at faster than the rate of inflation. So there will be this constant pressure, and there will-- this constant request from citizens to say, hey, the costs are going up, but they're going to have to be borne by the water payers, and everybody's going to want to transfer those costs to somebody else. So wherever you are in the category, you want somebody else in the category to have to pay higher. But we need to recognize that when we say no to staff's request in one area, it means we're saying the money's going to have to come from somebody else. Oftentimes, what happens is when-- particularly when rates are going up like this, there's pressure to ignore the deferred maintenance cost and not factor those in. And just hearing your numbers and, you know, I feel like I want to start with all of those, it doesn't feel-- I'm concerned that we're not budgeting enough for the deferred maintenance. You're talking about replacing all those pipelines in the next twenty years at a cost of twelve million dollars in today's dollars, right?
Right.
And we're budgeting how much a year in terms of getting ready for that? Did you say three hundred thousand?
At this time, we are budgeting three hundred thousand dollars for pipeline replacement.
Uh-huh. And is that-- is that--
Our discussion with advisory committee is gradually increase that revenue, that reserve over a period of time.
It seems like that's not going to be adequate, three hundred thousand dollars, you know, to be able to stay on top of that, particularly because you know that twelve million dollars is going to be a lot more than twelve million dollars, you know, as we move down the road. So one, I really hope that the message is don't cut on deferred maintenance, because all you're doing is I'm giving one person a lower rate today and making somebody else tomorrow pay a much higher rate to be able to do that, fix people out, pay in, there ought to be appropriate depreciation built into that. And the second thing is, we as the board, since the board created these districts, we have a responsibility to look at the long run and not just look at, oh, gosh, I hate to make that big increase right now, we're going to have to make that big increase, or else we're going to have even bigger problems. And if we-- if we advocate that responsibility, we're really just, you know, it's a little bit like deficit spending. What I don't want to do is engage in deficit spending in a sense with our water districts by putting it off. We have enough between the budget deficit and the trade deficit, we've got enough deficits going on out there and stuff, so encourage us to pay that-- pay careful attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready, maybe to tag on to what Supervisor Bennett was saying, if we were to look at these rate increases, how much of those rate increases are attributed to capital improvements?
The three hundred thousand dollars equals about hundred and twenty dollars per acre foot, one hundred and twenty dollars per acre foot. That's how much we are setting aside to replace the pipeline.
Okay. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is if we have a percentage increase of twenty-one percent on one of these, well, do we really say the water rate increase is twelve percent? And it's nine percent is part of the increase for infrastructure? I mean, because I really break it up, because I think what Supervisor Bennett was saying is a pretty good point in the sense, we have water, but we also have this deferred maintenance. We don't want to come back later and say all of a sudden the rates go up fifty percent to cover some of this. So what is the real-- can you figure out what the real water rate increase is?
Yes. What we have done in this recommendation is nine percent of the water rate increase is for the ongoing operation maintenance costs. We took the difference between nine percent and twenty-one percent, nine percent and fifteen point eight percent, and we came up with a revenue of seventy thousand dollars. Our recommendation, our staff report, is that seventy thousand dollars would be add-on to the three hundred thousand we are setting aside now. So if you were to approve our recommendation, we will have three hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year for the pipeline replacement. So to answer your question, nine percent for the ongoing operation maintenance, the difference in increments higher than nine percent is going towards the pipeline replacement program, which-- which brings in about seventy thousand dollars per year.
Okay. So then the rate increases themselves are not-- are pretty much not that high, it's this increment to replace these pipes later on and all the-- and all the maintenance work that we have to do.
That's what we are recommending, yes.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other questions? Then we-- we're going to make a motion on this?
I'll move the recommended action.
Do we have a second?
Well, I would just ask the supervisor from the district what he would like to do.
That's a tough one. This is really tough.
I have a question.
Yeah.
And, you know, putting this off is never the solution, not necessarily the solution either. I guess the question I have with the comments made by the homeowners groups that we've received these letters and the advisory group, is the advisory committee composed of the small farmer, the large farmer, the homeowners? Has there been sufficient dialogue? Is there, you know, can we talk this to death, or do we-- Or do we, do we end up at the same place? I guess I'm looking to see if we have a timeline, a critical timeline on the decision, or is there opportunity for further conversation that would look at a, a different sharing of the, of the total cost?
As far as the dialogue at the advisory committee, we have had three meetings to talk about the proposed water rate increase. As, as you know Supervisor Long, Callejas advised us of the proposed 10% water rate increase sometime late October. And since then, I have had different scenarios, different analysis done for the proposed water rate increases. And the major, as I mentioned, one advisory committee member does not believe in setting aside money for the pipeline replacement. Other than that, he's, he's, he supports what we are saying. As a matter of fact, he did not write the protest letter. He told me he's not going to come to the board meeting to protest.
I'll second the motion.
I know just myself, though, it's, it's tough. On the smaller acreage, nobody makes a living off of that, that acreage. I know, understand that. It's, but it's nice to have, and I've done that before myself, with three or four acres worth of avocados. But boy, it makes it pretty difficult to grow those at these kind of rates. There's no question, water is the big component. But on the other side, we don't, I don't see any of the real large farmers here talking to us. I guess they're the ones that, who are trying to make a living out of this stuff. I mean, the other, the rest of us want to make it as nice as part of our, our environment that we live in and our yards and everything else. And it's, it's, it's tough. But, yeah. I mean, this is, this is just a hard, hard thing. I know you're talking about the rates are going up. It's just really difficult to, to do it, but I don't see any other choice if we're doing it. I mean, what we're doing is, if we took what the gentleman had said, you know, can we adjust them around? We're just adjusting, but the number of dollars we need is the big deal. We need the dollars. And the other thing, I guess, is part of this is that we didn't set money aside 10 years ago and 15 years ago, right? We're having to make up more of this on a--
Well, we, we have started setting money aside about four years ago. We started gradually increasing that $300 pot over the years. And we could, our recommendation will be continue to increase that reserve.
Right. Yeah, it'd be great if, once we put something in, we know we have a maintenance later, we do it right away. So we don't end up with these huge increases. So, no, I, I guess, I don't know. I gotta go along with what we're doing here. I can't, I can't see anything else. Because we say no, then at some point, we're going to say no to these people. They're not going to pay it, but somewhere down the line, we're going to ask somebody to do a huge amount. And if we don't have any money, I know, then we're in real trouble. So Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, if I could just point out three things. I appreciate it's a difficult decision and we do that, and three things. One, just another request for staff, besides making sure we do deferred maintenance. We've had this conversation before that we, we, we want to as much as possible, we want to try to smooth these things out. So we want to start as early as possible. So I certainly would be expecting that next year, when you come back, it's not $370,000 in maintenance, but you actually have built into it this thing to grow and for this to continue to grow until we get it at a sustainable level, whatever that is. And we certainly, I certainly respect your analysis in terms of what that is, one. Two, as, as you said Supervisor Foy, if you say no to a 21%, you have to identify who should get, who should get the extra increase. And those people should be notified that we decided we don't want to go here and now you're going to-- And then you have a different group of people that would be responding. The third thing that I think is helpful for us to keep in mind is, you talk about growing avocados and that's difficult, et cetera. We will have great difficulty if we try to respond specifically to whatever the current needs are. But one of the, one of the beauties of the market system is, our job is to fairly reflect, have the price reflect the cost of the resource and let the market determine how people are going to use that resource. But if we, if we manipulate that, and we, and we can't always do that, but to the extent that we can as accurately as possible fairly reflect the true cost, which is deferred maintenance, et cetera, then people make, they use the market system to make the appropriate decisions as to whether it's this or something else that they decide to put their, their water towards.
I agree. Supervisor Parks?
Yes, a lot of this also has to do with MWD again, raising their rates. And I don't know if it's because I have a, you know, heightened sensitivity to this. I did note that they're looking at another major rate increase. I don't know if it will affect our portion of the, of their area or not. Are you aware of, I think they're talking well over 10%?
Well, the information I have is 10% rate increase for '09, 10% rate increase for 2010, and then 6% the following two years.
Yes, they're, they're meeting, their next meeting, I think, is going to be looking at another rate increase. I'm just wondering if you're going to be back here again, this, you know, sometime this year to what we've just raised, having to raise again.
Metropolitan Callejas rate setting process is, they make their rates effective January 1st of each calendar year. What our proposal to you is, we come back in December, January timeframe of every year, depending on what metropolitan rate increases are. So to answer your question, we will not be coming back to you this fiscal year.
Okay, and that, that's what I was concerned--
We will be coming back to you next fiscal, next fiscal year between November to February timeframe.
Okay, and that's, so I guess as far as what they're looking at in their next meeting for rate increases, that would be for the following year, not this year?
Following calendar, effective January 1st, 2009.
Sheriff Foy, I didn't want to tell the story till after the vote, because I didn't want to-- But I, I, I appreciate the vote. I think people sat here and made, made the hard decision and so the story is appropriate. But I watched a, a city, and I watched a council member at that city vote against every water rate increase that ever came forward. And yet, whenever a water main broke or whenever water quality concerns came up, that was the same council member who complained the most vehemently about why there wasn't good maintenance, why there wasn't good water quality, et cetera. And it's, and, you know, some, some people politically want to just always take that easy road. And I think this was a challenging vote and I appreciate the vote.
Yeah, just to, any, I think, obviously over the next three years and probably on continuing, to continue to involve the public, have the communications as open and transparent and, and alert our water partners, certainly the metropolitan. They should be helping us with that, taking the fair share of pain that goes with raising these rates in the sense of making sure they do a good job to inform the public as to why. That this is not, there's, no one's hiding the ball here. This is real-time cost and, and probably costs that should have started 10 years ago. And I'm not trying to lecture to you, I'm just saying, let's see what we can do to help our rate payers understand the complexity of why these costs are going up.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is the chair and the board. Thank you very much.
We'll go on to our next item? Yeah, let's see if we can do it. See if we can fly through. That clock must be five, 10 minutes fast.
Morning, board members. Paul Dursy from the county executive office. We are here with our halfway point mid-year budget adjustment board letter. Generally speaking, at this time, we try to make a projection of where we are for the current year. So we can give us indication of where we think we'll be going forward for next year. Based on what we see year-to-date for the current year, we're, we think we're going to be breaking even, maybe a little to the good. However, it's not an appropriation expenditure issue, it's more of a revenue issue is why, is why we're just barely making ends meet in the current fiscal year. We see a significant decrease in our sales tax-based revenues for the current year and projecting forward. We're not expecting significant increases for next year either. We will be back next year, next week with an update of what we're looking at for next budget year. But currently, we're working on trying to make sure that this current year is balanced and going forward. The mid-year, we went, we came to your board in October with a couple of budget adjustments of about a million, a little over a million dollars and 11 additional positions. And we made sure that your board was aware of the fact that those may not be sustainable. Right now, they're sustainable for the current year. Again, going forward, they may or may not be sustainable for, for subsequent years. The, the board letter hopefully is self-explanatory. I'd like to bring, bring attention to a couple of items. One is the, is the elections area, and that is, we expect to get 1.2 million from the state. It's the state's intention, it's in the legislation, that they will pay us expeditiously. Whether or not, what expeditious is, is, is subject to interpretation. But, but our recommendation at this time is to go ahead and accrue that revenue or expect that revenue in the current year. If it doesn't come in, we'll be back to your board at year-end with adjustment telling you that the board, the state reneged on their promise to pay. The couple of, we had a couple of bookkeeping adjustments and then one HSA adjustment regarding, you know, their annual update and annual cleanup for what their actual allocation from the state is. At the time of the budget, we don't know exactly what they'll be getting from the state and federal government. So generally, in mid-year, we, we update their allocation. Finally, the most significant item, I think your board's probably most interested in, is our Ventura County Medical Center. And this is our adjustment to the loan that we've been carrying, that VCMC and our, and general fund's been carrying for, for a couple of years now. It started, and we've been working with VCMC over those two years to try to determine what we think is an ongoing, ongoing cash flow shortage loan and what we consider to be fixed, non-recurring, one-time losses and under capitalization by the general fund. So the contribution that we're, we're recommending makes up for this under capitalization. And we are also asking that your board not charge. Currently, we charge VCMC interest from the general fund, if the general fund loans VCMC interest. VCMC is a, an enterprise fund, but part of the process of being an enterprise fund is being able to fully charge for your services. Clearly, they're a safety net and they don't have control over all the revenues a lot of the time. So the state and federal slow pays has caused what we, what we have isolated, at least for the current time, to be a negative cash flow. At year-end, last year-end is about 13 million. It's, it's higher than that. At this point in time, we would expect it to be about 16 million probably at the end of this fiscal year if, if things go as, as, as VCMC has projected. So we are requesting that your board approve that that loan be, that cash flow loan not be charged interest. So we think it'd be more reflective of controllable costs for the medical center. Hopefully, like I said, the board letter is self-explanatory or at least explanatory in enough detail for your board. And if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to try answering. And we have the, a number of departments being represented, that are represented here to answer probably more specific programmatic questions.
Supervisor Long?
It's probably not a question, except I'd ask that in our action, we would support sending a letter to the state. It's kind of like when you get a bill and you, and you're past due, you get a notice from the folks. Send a past due notice to the state regarding the elections obligation. And, and clearly, that was politically done to have the February 5th presidential primary and whatever your preference on whether that worked or not. They, they need to be reminded. And I'd ask that we send a letter to remind both the governor and our legislative delegation on that past due bill.
Could, could we find a collection agency that would take--
Yeah, we do, or somebody, yeah, that'd be good.
Our auditor, Mr. Long?
Thank you Supervisor Foy. Regarding item two on page three, the elections that you were just talking about, I am concerned about putting this budgeted revenue in at this time. I recommend that your board reduce contingency appropriations by $1.2 million and increase the appropriation in elections and not include the $1.2 million as revenue now. It is based currently on legislative intent. There's no appropriations in the state budget that I have been able to find that they are actually going to pay this. The last time we had a special election, the revenue didn't come in for another year and a half, which makes it a position where you could not be able to accrue this at the end of the year either. So that, that is my recommendation on this one.
If I can ask, why it didn't come in for a year and a half, so we can't accrue, because it's too far out?
It's too far out, yes.
Which without, within, without a year, that far out?
Well, sometimes not even a year.
But I mean, because we do, we do that now at the hospital. They owe us money. And, but we don't collect it for a long time, but we accrue that money, right?
We've had a problem with that too. Our external auditors have mentioned that the outstanding loans there, if there's no repayment back, would have to convert to contribution.
Right. But it, but we're assuming that they're going to pay us back, right? I mean--
Up till now, that's, that's the action that you're being asked to take today. And regarding item five, with the VCMC staff in my office is still reviewing information submitted as late as yesterday evening. Making the remaining $13 million loan interest-free will actually distort the true cost of the hospital by 1.2 million so far. And over the last few years, VCMC has gone from zero loan from the general fund at the end of the year to 16 million and to 27 million, of which you are now being asked to write off 14 million. The updated cash flow information we received from VCMC staff yesterday suggests that they have sufficient revenues to repay the 13.8 million trans loan by the end of the year and still be able to pay $1 million of the remaining $13 million loan from the general fund. My staff is still reviewing this information, together with the additional information that was submitted to support the IPU costs and the Santa Paula Hospital costs that were referred to in this board letter. Additionally, at this time, your board has not yet been asked to reevaluate the estimated revenues that we already had in our budget that don't seem to be materializing. And you're not therefore being asked to reduce appropriations at this time. I'm sure the CEO will come back before the, the year-end. But we already know that we are running low on the sales tax, which supports the Prop 172. We're looking at approximately $2 million shortfall there. Interest earnings shortfall of 2.5 million so far. Recording fee revenues of $1.6 million and tobacco settlement of $850,000. I remain concerned about the cash flow for several funds, but the information isn't gelified enough yet to give you with any degree of certainty what that outcome is going to be. And we're going to be monitoring that very carefully over the next few months.
Right. Okay. Go ahead Supervisor.
One question for our auditor. If the state does reimburse us between now and June, if we followed your, your suggestion, which is we took it out of contingency, and the state does reimburse us between now and June, then what is the--
Then you'd recognize the revenue and replenish your contingency.
Right, so we would have to--
Yes.
So if, and if the state doesn't reimburse us by the time we get to June, we're going to recognize that they didn't reimburse us and then we're going to--
Come back and--
Take it out of contingency or whatever we think is the appropriate thing. Either way, in June, we're going to square this one way--
We'll square one way or the other.
We'll square this one way or the other. Could I ask the CEO to respond to some of the comments made by the auditor and your, your opinion or thoughts on that?
I think it's a matter of choice for your board and a matter of judgment regarding her office and ours. One could say that it distorts the, I think it was said that it distorts the cost of running the hospital. But another way to look at it is that if we do not, pardon, if we pass along the interest costs being forced upon the county of Ventura, the general fund, from, by the state to our hospital, who is in a cash flow and a deficit position already, in, in my view, that sort of disguises and, and does not reflect the true position of the county, because we would show that over there as a, I don't know if these are proper accounting terms, but it would be showing something in the, an actual higher cost to the hospital than would otherwise be if we were to just face up to it and take a general fund appropriation and give, and increase our annual appropriation of the hospital. It is a choice we can make. It is not really, it's not an accounting issue in the sense that it violates some rule. It's a matter of how we choose to do it. And we think at this point, there's a probability that we have to come back, you know, one way or the other. But by recognizing if we go over to the elections appropriation, rather than take it out of your contingency, which your board as a practice has considered that to be kind of a firewall until the very end of the year to be sure we maintain that contingency reserve to, to be available for this if it turns out that-- contingency reserve to, to be available for this, if it turns out that the state is slow pay, or the rules change, or they reneg, we simply come to you and tell you that. By the end of the year, the Budget Office and the financial planners in our office will give you a, an accurate picture of exactly where we stand at the end of the year. Up till then, it's guesses on everybody's part, so it's a matter of judgment and choice, and I support the Budget Officer's recommendation.
One other follow-up on that operational issue, from an accounting standpoint, the interest or lack of charging interest really doesn't distort that, because that's kind of a below-the-line, below-the-operational aspect, when you look at their financial statements, all the, the contribution and, and the forgiveness of the interest would really show below the line, and so it wouldn't really reflect directly. You could still evaluate the operational impact, which you can now, because any interest income or any interest expense is kind of a below-the-line accounting adjustment from that standpoint, so it's not really taken into account when you're looking at the operational effect or operational results of, of the VCMC.
Any comments?
Yeah.
Speaker close?
We don't have any other, but I just want to make, okay, so let me look at the two things we're looking at. The idea of putting this appropriations for the elections, we could put that on, and just like your recommendation is, and then if we don't get paid, we don't get paid. We just take it off, and we, it comes out of contingency. Pretty straightforward. Is that, that's true, so it doesn't hurt us, does it?
It's just moving away from the more conservative approach we've had in the past, as far as when you actually budget some revenue.
Okay, but I, but we still have the state saying they're gonna pay us. They haven't said they're not gonna pay us. Right, okay. Then on the, the other thing about basically forgiving a loan on the hospital, doing some research on that, it looks like to me, most of the, of this 14 million, I think that's the numbers, 14 million, comes back from a big portion of our investment in Santa Paula, which I guess if I was a, a business, I would have put a capital investment in it. We really didn't do a capital investment, right?
That's, well, we, we, originally, we put in some capital dollars, but we said, hey, VCMC, you kind of pick up the rest. Well, now, we're kind of picking up the rest.
Right, so I mean, I guess what we're trying to do there is, we're trying to bring all these pieces in, knowing that we're gonna buy, repair, and we're gonna run into a deficit, we're gonna put our capital in, like a business would do, and they would have this, and that's, and that's where we're at.
That's correct.
The other piece of that is, what I, research shows me is that we had a retirement cost, that we made all the other departments whole, but with them, we didn't make them whole, and I guess right now, we're saying, we're gonna come back and make you whole now on our retirement, is that correct?
That's correct. We kind of made them absorb the loss from those increases in cost, and if you recall, and I think it was '06, '07, we came back to your board and increased their annual contribution because of those effects, but we did not go back and adjust their prior year losses due to those effects.
So what we've been doing is just carrying those forward?
That's correct.
Okay, and I guess, so from that standpoint, as I, from a business standpoint, we come and make that capital investment, because now we have an asset that we've owned, we're up and running, we're hopefully a little bit ahead of our deficit of what, and we won't probably have to put as much capital into this, hopefully, this hospital.
That's correct, and we're hoping, working with VCMC, we're hoping, and they're hoping, I'm sure, that this time next year, we come back and we, we're saying that Santa Paula Hospital is at a break-even point.
Is it, which is ahead of?
Which is ahead of schedule.
Which is ahead of schedule.
Slightly ahead of schedule.
Most likely, so, so we've been doing a pretty good job in that sense. So, the difference was, we kind of tried to do this out of cash flow, instead of really just saying, here's our lump sum, and let's make this thing work.
Right.
And as, because we wanted to buy this asset. Okay, so I, I understand that part of it. Now, on the other side, once we get rid of this part of that loan, we've got another 15 or 14 million that they, that is owed back to the county, right?
That's correct.
Okay. How do we keep that, so that doesn't continue to grow, and our contribution keeps close to the 15-something million that Mr. Powers and I kind of agreed on last year, that we try to keep at that, because what I don't want to do is, I don't want to see us get it to a point where, okay, we, we didn't make contribution, but this debt keeps growing. And I know the rest of this debt is basically, the state owes us, what, 15 million dollars?
Correct, correct. They owe, they owe, the state owes us basically all of that money.
All of it.
I, I think that, between the state and federal government, correct. However, I think what we'll be doing, as we have been doing, is, is monitoring and working with VCMC on their cash flows, and getting continuous cash flow updates with their, with their people, and then following up on that in that regard. If we feel that, for example, if, if some of their costs or reimbursements go down, for example, if the state says, we're gonna cut all funding to VCMC by 10%, and we know that VCMC's costs are not gonna go down, because we are the safety net for the, for the public, then there may, we may be back to your board, because that would be a contribution increase, and we wouldn't expect them to necessarily absorb that specific cost. However, if they're gonna be increasing costs from more, more discretionary areas, we would ask, ask them to, to trim those back a little bit and, and get into, so, so we'll be working with them throughout the year, as we've been, over the, actually, the last two years, we've been working pretty closely with them as, as far as updating those cash flows, and trying to, try to track them, and try to monitor them, and part of the process is try to determine what was long-term and what was short. Long-term in the fact that it's a fixed number that we can write off versus the ongoing cash flow deficit, and not a one-time write-off, if that makes sense.
And then, taking one more step, once we, in a sense, relieve this loan, it puts our books, if this would be correct, in probably a more accurate position, in the sense that if we have this additional 15 million, that's, that's sort of 14 that's sitting out there, that is really our capital investment, we're not gonna get it paid back. It really puts us in a more accurate position in our?
From our standpoint, it absolutely does, and, and frankly, from the, even the annual financial statement, the outside auditors already reclassified that loan from, let's say, a short-term loan to a long-term loan, so it's not even part of the, let's say, unreserved fund balance, when you look at the county's fund balance. So it's already been kind of reserved as a long-term loan, from there, from the outside accountant's standpoint, and, and, well, the Auditor Controller's office made that adjustment.
Right.
On their comprehensive annual financial report.
Does it change?
The figures are accurate, whether the reclassification took place or not, the loan is still out there. It's a matter of writing off the loan versus paying it back. That's the decision you're faced with.
Right, but if we don't have, if it's kind of like, I've come from business, you know, bad debt that's not gonna get paid back?
Yeah.
Well, it's uncollectible, so what do we do with that?
Well, it's uncollectible to the extent of the information that is presented on how it is uncollectible. If you'll, just to set the record straight, in June of 2006, your board was given, giving a contribution to Santa Paula Hospital, and that was specifically a one-time 4.0, almost 1 million dollars, 4.1 million dollars, to pay for the renovation costs, and it said this would complete the cash purchase and renovation of the hospital, and relieve VCMC over 400,000 dollars a year in annual debt service payments. So, this is over and above what has already taken place as far as investment by the county. What you're looking at now is an additional piece, and then, the remaining 13 million would truly reflect what the state and federal government still owe us.
Okay, all right. You want to make a comment?
Well, I was gonna say, first, yes, it does make it easier to understand the true position of the hospital and the cost of running the hospital. That was your first question. Secondly, these other issues, I'd be happy to come back and schedule it for next week for a more thorough discussion, if your board would like to do it, in the interest of time and the audience. The, I thought that the Budget Officer explained that portion of it, in his, there'd be part of his presentation, as to the difference between the capital contribution and the, what we were hoping would be paid for out of cash flow, so we'd be happy to, you know, have a, a much lengthier discussion on this at a later date, if you'd like.
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna move the recommended action in terms of the budget adjustments.
Okay. Supervisor Long, you want to say something?
Well, I'll second the motion. I wanted to just say that I think that this has been a good discussion, and I think that the intent here is to be more transparent and to talk about the, the existing obligations of, of these adjustments, and to note that the, the Budget Office has said on, when the May revise comes out, we'll all have a better picture of what is intended and what is real, and, and it comes back to us again, so it's, that's my second motion.
I'm, in terms of the Santa Paula Hospital, who owns that asset? Is it the hospital, enterprise?
No, the County of Ventura.
The county owns that, that's right.
Absolutely. VCMC is not a separate entity.
Right.
They are really apart, and from accounting standpoint, we try to separate them, but they're really a part of, pretty much a part of the General Fund, but we try to account for them as an enterprise fund, to make, make them, you know, hold their feet to the fire, so to speak, as far as accounting, and, and trying to, trying to break even and keep down our contribution as, as much as possible, and we feel they've done a pretty good job of that.
And it's, to me, it's just which, you know, which, you know, pot are we putting that, that debt in, and, you know, if we build the Todd Road Jail, I'm sure, wherever it is, whether it's the Sheriff's Department, or it's at the county, that's a debt we're gonna all be working on.
That's correct.
And I, I think this is a, a good move. I know that we, the state isn't going to be returning the money it owes us, which would eliminate, you know, this altogether anytime soon, so with that, I'll go ahead and support the motion.
Just make, make one point. I mean, at some point in time, we're gonna fund the Todd Road Jail, and when we fund the Todd Road Jail, we're not gonna call that a loan to the sheriff, and ask the sheriff to pay us, pay us interest on it, although.
That's a good idea.
Although it is a good idea.
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's, it's very similar to what we're talking about here.
Exactly.
The hospital should pay their debt. And that was mine, too.
Okay, then we have a motion in a second, we need to vote. We are sorry for the Air Quality Board for holding you up so much, so, thank you. Okay.
Thank you Board Members.
I think that's it for everything we've got, and then we will call this session to close. Right? We're done, we're done, huh? We're done with the board stuff, right?